Good evening, everyone. I would like to call our South St. Paul School Board meeting of Monday, February 27th, 2023, meeting to order. Lisa, will you call the roll?
Director Weber.
Here.
W Felton.
Here.
Claflin.
Here.
Lala Burdi.
Here.
T Felton.
Here.
And Director Bierman stepped away for a minute. Chair Roche.
Here.
We have six present at 6:00 PM.
And if we could rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And, all right. I will ask for a motion to approve our meeting agenda for this evening, as well as the school board meeting agenda for February 27th, 2023, the Committee of the Whole and Regular Meeting for February 13th, 2023. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And motion carries. All right, tonight, we've got a double feature. Two pieces of quality in action tonight. First, I would like to welcome up Terry Breitoy from Capoja Elementary.
Greetings, school board. New school board members, greetings to you too. Hope you're settling in well. It's good to see you here. Excited tonight to share with you our story of parent engagement resurgence. I think since the pandemic has subsided somewhat, we're seeing a resurgence of family interest in just physically coming into school. And so I know that the other elementary school in town, Lincoln Center and Capoja, have really focused on how we can get families in, not only in kind of PTA ways, right? We always ask families to raise money, right, for us, but really to see what goes on in schools. And so we are thinking of various ways to get families in, to be with their kids and to see what they're doing in school. And so I'm excited to share with you tonight just some of the things that have happened at Capoja on a wide scale, and then also in a couple of grade levels that have really taken this. And I describe it to staff as the door has opened back open to families. And not having families in the building for a certain number of years, there are a certain level of trepidation for a lot of folks, not only because of the pandemic, but there's not been some great news in the air about school safety as well. And so there's been a lot of uneasiness. But what we've discovered is that our families are ready to come back in, and they're ready to be a partner in their kid's education. So it's really cool to see. So I'm going to describe to you just a few of the larger things that have happened for the beginning of the year. And first of all, I have to give a shout out to our PTA. Now, PTAs are almost like school boards where you don't, well, maybe except for this last year with school board, when I believe that there was 23 members who put their name forward. But many times, it's hard to fill those seats. And we have an incredibly involved school board this year. And I want to give a shout out to Celia Runquist, who's our current president. They're always looking for people to stop by the meetings, but they've been highly attended. And for the first year ever, we have three dads on our PTA, which is super cool, and I love to see that. They've done things like movie nights, which are huge hits. And I remember talking to a dad, and he was handing out, he was handing out notices for like our next night out. And he was having so much fun just interacting and meeting other families. It was really cool. And it felt like he was starved for that type of family engagement for his kids and for himself as well to feel part of a community. So it's really good to see. So our PTA is really doing a great job with movie nights, with restaurant nights out. And they have been great collaborators on our Fall Festival, which I'm going to describe. And then I'm going to use this free advertising time to talk about our Spring Festival that's coming up as well. So in the fall, round about November, this is when, as a staff, and we also have a site solutions team. And one of our subcommittees is parent engagement. And what came from that committee was we're ready to invite parents back in, and how can we do this on a grand scale? So at our Fall Festival, we each team developed literacy centers. And you can see from the pictures that are listed there, the number of people who came in. And we were quite overwhelmed. And I know Dr. Zambrino had stopped by. And just the number of people who were there, smiling, happy to be there. A few years back, it might have been a super center for COVID, but anyways, we got through it. We rediscovered once again that it's okay that families come back in. So it was a super popular night. And we generally only have one a year in the PTA. And staff had said, let's do this again in the spring, which I'll get to. So I do have a couple of teachers here tonight. We have Sarah Wotypka, and she's one of our excellent kindergarten teachers. And these two grade levels have, like I said, really opened the door a little wider to inviting parents in and have had several opportunities for parents to come into the building. And they're going to share their experiences and what they have planned. So step on up, Sarah, and would you introduce Sadie and Piper?
So I have with me this evening Piper Patel, who is a kindergartner in my room, and her mom Sadie. Sadie has been one of our parent volunteers at our family centers. So we have been doing family centers. And it's a time when we invite parents to come in and actually run one of the centers. They're usually connected to the things that we're working on in math and literacy. There's often some kind of art activity at one of the centers. So the parents have the opportunity to see all of the kids in the class as they rotate through each of those centers. So, you know, they're spending time not only with their own child in the classroom, but also interacting with the full classroom full of students. It's really nice from our perspective because as a teacher, you really can only teach one new center at a time. So when we've got those family center days, those kids are getting five brand new centers, and they love it. They're so engaged. We're able to build on lots of play-based activities, which is exactly what five and six-year-olds need. So it's just a really nice opportunity to have parents in and kind of see what we're working on, but also really engage the students at the same time. So Sadie's just going to talk a little bit about why she chose to volunteer and join us for those family centers.
Yeah, hi, guys. So I'm Sadie. I just, I chose to volunteer in Piper's classroom because for me, it was important to kind of show her that I'm invested in her education. I wanted her to know that if I have an opportunity to come in there and be alongside with her while she learns and plays, I'm definitely going to take up that opportunity. I got to meet some of her classmates, which is really fun. So I could kind of see the faces of some of the names I hear about at home. This little friend here next to me in this picture, he was so great chatting with. That was such a fun time. So, and also just to help the teachers in the community. I know especially kindergarten teachers in the younger grades, they have so many hopes and dreams for a classroom. But like reality, sometimes you can't do five new centers every day that maybe you wish you could. So to be able to help you with that, show Piper that I'm kind of a team with her educators is really important to me. So it was great.
Piper, would you like to tell us what it was like to have mom come into the classroom?
I love my mom.
Nice.
It was pretty fun to have her there, wasn't it?
What else did you like about it? Anything you can remember? What was cool about it?
I liked playing bingo with her, and I won bingles about like twice.
You won bingo?
Yep.
Yeah, it was fun, right? Yeah.
All right, cool.
That's great.
That's awesome.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Say, Piper, I gave you one of these Packer Pride bracelets, but I think anyone who's volunteering in a classroom probably needs one too. Can you give one of these to your mom?
Yeah, lucky. Thank you. I'll wear it with pride.
Oh, thanks, Piper.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we weren't sure if Piper was going to say anything. She was just a thumbs up earlier.
She did awesome. Way to go, Piper.
Way to go. Public speaking's in her future. And also Pat Stellic, who's one of our Grade Two teachers, they have made a commitment to every other month invite parents and some type of parent engagement as well. So she's going to tell you about those.
Did I say Stellic? Pat Leesner got married about 10 years ago.
That's okay. I'm Pat Leesner. And just like Sarah, we wanted families to come in and share in our learning. So we have families come in to do some, about five or six centers as well. We've done it twice so far this year. First was holidays around the world. So students and families learned games and did some activities in phonics and some math skills based on holidays around the world. And then for Friendship Day around Valentine's Day, we had another Family Connection Day. The first Family Connection Day, I had about five parents come in. And the second time, I had eight. I've had moms and dads and grandparents, which has been really nice to see. The students are so excited when their family members come, and it's so fun to see them interact with their family member and the other students and introduce each other to their friends, to their family member. We plan on doing at least one more by the end of the year. And in the following years, we'd like to include one either every month or bi-monthly as we go on.
That's awesome.
That's great.
Thank you.
Really.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. So going on to the last slide here, we just recently had another, one more time, if you could. All right. We had hosted the National African American Parent Involvement Day, and we did open it up to all families. We had probably 180 family members come in. And it says Parent Involvement Day, but yes, there were aunts and uncles and grandmas and grandpas and everybody. People who were in from out of town, I think, came in, basically. So it was really kind of cool. And we offered not only a breakfast in the morning, but we had cultural books on the tables that they could read as well. And then they got to spend the next hour, so how their kid's day starts. So a lot of them had the opportunity to sit through morning meeting and how we start our day. And we got a lot of nice feedback. And here's just a few of the bits of feedback. I loved to see how many families were involved. It was cool to see the opening day sequence for my child. It was nice to see my child in class and what they do. It was such a treat to be in class with my kid. We also asked how we could improve. And a slightly better breakfast option was number one. So I'm feeling pretty good about that. Anyways, I thought the banana bread was quite tasty. So we're always looking for new and different and engaging ways to involve parents in their kid's education. And I feel like parent engagement is back, and I think families really want to come in. And I really want them to be engaged in what their kids are learning academically, too. And that has always been a stretch. For years, we have done gingerbread houses, which is not bad, right? But we've done art projects. But we really want them to take an interest in what they're learning in math, how they learn to read, what type of books that they're taking home and reading. And that will be our next endeavor, is how we truly deepen their understanding of what it's like to go to school in South St. Paul. Okay? So we have one more family event that's coming up on our last slide. And this is, this is just shameless. It's just advertising. I need to take some airtime for this. But we are having an engineering night on April 18th. We'll be serving some food, but we're also working with an organization called The Works. They're going to come in and set up 12 stations, and about half of those will be make it, take it. So we're working with the PTA on that as well. And we do expect, much like the Fall Festival, 400 to 500 people who choose to join us that night, too, which is super cool. It's a great way to build community as well. So super proud of the folks who have opened their doors to our families. And we'll just continue to do that on the years to come. So thank you for listening. Yeah.
You have 12, and half of them will be what?
Make it and take it. So basically, they'll be making. I think there's a catapult station that they'll be able to make, and then they take it home with them. Yep, yeah. Good question.
Outstanding.
Thanks for everything you're doing.
Absolutely. Yes, wonderful.
Thanks for the invite.
Terry, I think it's so exciting. You know, I think we lost a lot in schools when we all kind of retreated during the pandemic. And for us to really kind of come back and feel, feel that sense of community and pride that our town is so good at, I think that's just incredible that you're fostering that.
Yeah, thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thanks much.
Thank you.
Well done. Terry? All right. I promised too, we've got another quality in action as well. We've been talking a lot about the desired daily experience as of late. And so I'm going to turn this over to Dr. Zambrino and Chad Schmidt.
Thank you, Chair Roche. Yeah, we, with this group, we shared a bit about the desired daily experience. And our staff have kind of had some opportunities to engage with in that. And Dr. Schmidt will walk through that. But it is something we're proud of, some work we've been doing in collaboration with our staff and with our students and families. And a lot of it really comes back to what we were just talking about. Like, we lost a lot during the pandemic. And last year was a really tough year. I mean, I heard that loudly and clearly even before I came in. The stakeholder feedback was clear. People were hurting, and that wasn't unique to South St. Paul. It's kind of was everywhere. But when you're in a tightly knit community like this, it's so close, it feels even that, I think it's just that much harder. So as we launched the school year, it was like, how can we do a reset on what it is we're trying to create? And so we launched some work around our desired daily experience. So I'll let Dr. Schmidt walk through the process we've gone through up to now. And then we've got a video we'll watch, and then we'll kind of share next steps.
That's great. Thank you, Dr. Zambrino. So in the fall, at opening day, some of you were there. We invited all staff members in South St. Paul to participate in helping frame up what is the desired daily experience. So what is the preferred future we want for each of our students, for each of our staff, and for each of our families? That kicked off the process during the fall. Our principals convened families from their school and did the same kind of process with them, getting their voice into this work, and students. So having students describe what they wanted in their daily experience and having that help show up in this document. So some of the words you'll see on here are quotes from staff members, from family members, and from students, highlighting the kinds of experiences they want to have on a daily basis while they're in our schools. And then this fall, no, earlier this winter, we went out to, Dr. Zambrino and I went out to each of the schools, and we're able to engage staff in some additional conversations about where do we already see some of these things happening? And where are some opportunities for us to step up and maybe lean into work differently around trying to deliver the daily experience? As leaders, we know that part of our role and responsibility is tending to the staff. And so seeing that as a significant part of our work, and staff who work daily with students and with families, how can they help our stakeholders have a daily experience that is described on this page? And so in that work with Lisa and Danette, we put a video together to show you tonight.
This is where we all cross our fingers for technology to work.
Packers are safe. Packers are respectful. Packers are awesome.
In South St. Paul, we put people first. And that's why it was so important for us to create our desired daily experience for our students, families, and staff. We want to make sure everyone feels seen, heard, and valued.
By knowing what our desired daily experiences are for our students, for their families, and for our staff, we set the conditions for success to occur.
As a district, we really want to come together and make sure that everyone feels included, sharing our experiences, making sure that everyone has a voice in that experience.
As a student, it makes me feel like heard. And I think all teachers respect different students' ideas.
Relationships with students matter a ton. And so that's what we try to build here in South St. Paul, is those relationships with students. Once those are put in place, the education will naturally come.
Having a connection with one teacher is like the best thing a student could have because if they can't talk to their parents or their students, they can talk to that teacher.
If our students feel safe, if they feel comfortable, if they feel like they have a voice, then they're more inclined to learn.
I think it's important that the schools provide a safe environment where they can kind of push themselves and succeed in a variety of different ways.
If they feel part of something, and then they can come to school and enjoy coming to school, the stresses of other things that may be going on in their lives get pushed aside for once.
We know that students learn best when they see that the schools and their families are in partnership. Families are the biggest advocates for their students. And we want that advocacy. We want to be in true partnership with our families.
Families are just as important as our students. We need them as partners in this process to help their children grow and learn so that they're prepared for whatever next step they choose to make.
We always have these dreams and aspirations for our kids and what we want them to do. We want them to succeed and be the best that they can be. Asking us what are our keywords for our kids or asking us what we want their school going to look like, I think is very important.
By attending to the desired daily experiences of families, we help enrich the learning environment for our students, both in school and out of school.
As a mom, I trust that my child's going to school every day and getting the things that we're laying out, that we're saying, that we're doing. I trust that she feels included, that she feels welcome. And she does. She comes home at the end of the day loving school.
I think the biggest thing is having that open communication, building that trust in both directions, knowing that we all have the same goal. We want to see our kids be successful and have every opportunity that we can offer them.
Teaching is not an easy job, and any of the jobs in our district take a lot. And so if staff feel that they're valued and that their experiences are positive, they're going to in turn create a much more positive experience for our students.
These are things that I want as an employee here at South St. Paul. These are things that I would like to have when I come to school every day.
I think it's a lot about we're provided with the opportunity to say what we need.
I liked that we got to collaborate and hear voices from all over. That part was exciting.
I'm excited when I look at the list of things that we're putting out for our staff. When I read those statements, I'm like, this is the dream job, to be able to come to school, feel welcome, feel included, feel like I am part of a family when I'm at work.
Keeping this guidance in the forefront of our mind is going to help me be a better teacher. This is an easy list of things that is good teaching.
Everything that's listed there is something that I think all teachers want to provide for their students.
I always have fun. I always want to be at school. I like schools that it makes me want to keep staying at school.
We want each and every one of our students to be successful. At the end of their educational journey in South St. Paul, when they walk across the stage and earn their diploma, we want them to be effective communicators, successful collaborators, and people who contribute to the betterment of our community.
We've often heard it said that it takes a village to raise a child. And that village here is a combination of not just our students, but our staff and our families. And so making sure that everyone is able to come together and work together in a way that's positive and productive allows us to really deliver the greatest opportunity.
Oh, that was great.
Very nice. Put that on the recruitment page.
Shout out to Danette and Crew. That's another grassroots made here in South St. Paul by South St. Paul. So it's always impressive when we see the quality of the work, but.
And so some of the work we've done next is to prepare images that we can see in our schools. So we'll see these in our classrooms, and we'll see them in the schools. And they'll be a reminder for all of us about what are our stakeholders asking for and how do we do our job to the best to help other people experience that on a daily basis.
Wow, that's great. I love that that's what we're rolling out and kind of falls right in line with Terry Breitoy having been here and kind of that continued engagement with everyone involved in the education process of the kids.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Awesome. All right. So I think we are moving on to the report section of the night. And first up is always public listening session. Public listening sessions occur at the first meeting of the month in person, right here at City Hall at 4:15, or can be done directly through the website. We did not have any public listening submissions for tonight's meeting. But I'm going to turn this over to Vice Chair Weber to give us a COW report.
So at 5:00, we have our Committee of the Whole meeting, or COW, where a lot of the more, the business of the board is done, some more in-depth discussions, more just information that the board can have before, you know, we bring them to the full, to the full meeting. And so today, we did an overview of the American Indian Education Resources. And we had members of the American Indian Parent Group that came and spoke about their experiences in the school and how they connect with their students and how they're focusing on graduation rates. They have a resource center now in the high school where they have a lot of their artifacts and a lot of their just ways to bring their traditions really to life and to continue, continue them on. So it was a very, very interesting and enriching presentation. And then we had a long discussion about the new academic calendar, which we will be hopefully approving later this evening, and the committee group that was led by the district and also included all the members of different employee groups and some parents and other community members to build out a calendar for next year, which, if you've ever tried to like schedule a calendar, you know it was not an easy decision. But they were able to work through all the various, all the various hoops to work through to come to an agreement. So they're going to be presenting that to us later. And then we also did a quick report of some of the outside committees that we serve on.
And one other thing we just started talking about as well, as we're sort of engaging our community in every turn that we can, but also talking about how we can bring student voice to the board and possibly representatives as well. I'm starting to explore those ideas. And I like that a lot. Next up, we will have a superintendent update from Dr. Zambrino for our highlights around the district.
All right. Thank you, Chair Roche. Couple of upcoming things we want to start off with. So on March 9th, we have our next scheduled Flex Learning Day, which is, impacts our students in grades pre-K through 8. So they don't have school in session. It is to allow, something we talked about with the, last time we talked about calendar, creating some more time for staff to collaborate with one another and connect with families. And so that's happening on March 9th. Shout out to my daughter Isabella, whose birthday is that day. I'm sure she's not watching, but I'll tell her I said that to embarrass her thoroughly. And then teachers will send home information on what to do for that day. So if parents or families are wondering what to do, just feel free to reach out to your classroom teacher, and they can let you know what the kids can work on that day. Also this week, we have MIP Personal Projects. So at 10th grade, so maybe a lot of people don't know this when we talk about the Middle Years Program. It starts in middle school, but it does go through 10th grade. And so the Personal Project Fair is coming up this Thursday, and parents can come to check that out between 12:15 and 2:15 at the Secondary Building. But it really is a culmination of the work they've been doing in our IB Middle Years Program. Students get to choose a personal area of interest to explore and then show skills they've learned during their five years of MIP. So some of the projects that the kids will be bringing forward will show their work in skills of self-management, research, communication, critical thinking, and collaboration. So excited to see what our kids are capable of. I'm always impressed when I get to visit our, any of our schools. But those are, those personal projects are great. Some highlights from around the district, big talk of the town, I think, right now. We had a great season for our girls hockey program. So they got third place in the State High School League State Tournament. I got to watch them play at the Excel Center, and it was, man, they are just tenacious, and they played their hearts out. Tough loss for that, trying to move forward into the first place competition. But I heard the team beat the last team like 15 to 1, and our girls held in there like crazy right till the end. So super impressed there. And then they went on to the next round and won third place. So proud of them. And then between this meeting and our next meeting, want to make sure, oh, also, sorry, let me back up. me back up. Lilly and Delaney on our team also received all tournament team honors. So kudos to them for that work. Getting to know the kids, I, you know, don't know them all and I'm like, who's that? And I was watching Lilly and others, man, she can fly around. I'm like, why is she playing offense? Which shows why I don't really know much about hockey because she's a great defender. So it's like, obviously she was in the right place and lots of shots on goals, on goal from defense. So impressive. But between this meeting and our next, we do have some other excitement going on around athletics. Want to make sure I capture it all. We have boys wrestling and our swim and dive team moving forward with some of their athletes in the state tournament. And then boys and girls basketball have big games coming up with some section playoffs. So our kids, as always, impressed in the classroom and on the court or the rink or wherever it is they are. So I hope everyone does well and meets their, exceeds their expectations there. We recently had a great engagement. We're working hard to get our younger students connected to our older students. It's really important to me that we, you know, have people think about that Packer pride all the way through so that they feel connected to the secondary building right from when they start. So shout out to our two student-affiliated groups, our Black Pride Organization, as well as our Comunidad de Latinos Unidas. February is Black History Month and I Love to Read Month. So they combined those two themes and visited the elementary schools to read to the students in honor of Black History Month and I Love to Read Month. So thank you to our student leaders. Had a really nice opportunity at Lincoln Center for second and third graders to learn hands-on lessons around financial literacy. I was impressed to see we're starting them that young. And I don't think you can probably start too young to learn that, to not make any mistakes. But that was led by the help of nonprofit Junior Achievement North, or JA North. And they teach students financial literacy by bringing in volunteers from the corporate. So it's always nice to have corporate partners in. And then hands-on activities around citizenship, earning, saving, spending, and donating money, entrepreneurship. That's always good to learn how to make some money. And the production progress, so our process. So appreciate the partnership there and great to see our kids learning some really applicable life skills. Talked at our last few meetings about our job fair that we had in partnership with the city. We all went in there a little nervous, like, is anybody going to come? And we had amazing turnout. So Joel Miltier, our HR Director's here. I know that Lisa Branddecker in the room and others helped plan and organize that, but we had great turnout. And I've heard we've already had a few people hired out of the job fair. So in a time when it's really hard to find talent, one, it showed us how many people are interested in the district and in the city. And then we were able to pull in some talent from there. It's exciting today when like, we talked to this person and this person's starting. So I appreciate the effort of everyone who collaborated with that. We had a lot of our staff there who showed up and gave their evening to be with us. So thank you to that, to them for that. As always, you can follow us on your favorite social media app. We do our best to kick out positive news and exciting things going on, as well as important updates, like today could have been one of those with the ICE. I guess I was glad to wake up and not have to worry about that, but we do work to keep people well informed. And then just a reminder on our important dates, we have March 9th, the Flex Learning. That's pre-K through 8. There's no school in session. Kids will learn from home. March 10th and 13th are dedicated as no school for staff professional development. And again, can't believe it's right around the corner, spring break coming up March 27th to the 31st. As always, meeting materials are available online. You can review any of our past packets or videos are all posted for anybody who's interested in seeing what our board is up to. Thank you. Excellent. Thank you, Dr. Zambino. All right. Next up, we move to the consent items on our agenda. Consent items are items that typically are financial claims, staffing, personnel in nature, and do not require much for public discussion or explanation prior to board action. Typically, these items have been presented through the board packet or have already been discussed, explained, and do not require much for further explanation. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
And second?
Second.
Any discussion? All of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And motion carries. And we do not have any policy items for review tonight. So we're going to move on to our business items. And I am looking for a motion to approve the South St. Paul School Board to approve the 2023-2024 district calendar.
So moved.
And second?
Second.
Any discussion or information from Mr. Schmidt?
Good evening, Board. And so this calendar was created through a stakeholder engagement process, representatives from across the district, teachers, paraprofessionals, clerical, and also families. And so we brought that group together a couple of different times, heard their ideas, questions, suggestions about draft calendars that we presented to them, and came out with this calendar that we're putting in front of you. The first day of school is the Tuesday after Labor Day. The last day of school is June 6th. And you can see where winter break lands, you can see where spring break lands. And it has a number of similar features to what we've done in recent years. This Flex Learning Day that Dr. Zambino just mentioned for the elementary schools, that's in place on the calendar for next year, once in the fall and once in the spring. And I don't have anything else to share, but it's, I think it's a, I think it's a good calendar and we're asking for the board to approve it.
Excellent. Any further discussion or questions? Okay. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And motion carries. Thank you, Dr. Schmidt. Sticking around, you know that you are up next. I am looking for the South St. Paul School Board to approve the American Indian Parent Advisory Committee's vote of noncompliance. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
And second?
Second.
And discussion?
Yeah. Thank you, everyone. I'm inviting Assistant Director Gomes with me. So this, the Parent Advisory Committee from, the American Indian Parent Advisory Committee was here tonight at the Committee of the Whole and presented a little bit about the program offerings that they have and their resolution around non-concurrents. And what that includes is some recommendations about how the district can support and partner with our American Indian liaison and the Parent Advisory Committee to better serve students. And so I asked Ms. Gomes here to share a little bit about some of the work that we're already partnered around.
Yeah, thank you. I think that the work of an American Indian Ed program can be really hard because of some of the things that our liaison, Chris, shared earlier this evening. It can often be hard to identify students, to visualize them. At a previous meeting, we talked about not only land acknowledgement, but community acknowledgement. And the fact that American Indian people often feel that their history and their present day existence is invisibilized by society as a whole. And we certainly know that that's a challenge in our public schooling. And so I think it's important to share that behind the scenes, we find it very important to support our American Indian Ed program, to help it grow. And part of that is helping to identify the students, as Chris described earlier this evening. It can take quite a bit of work, even going through, looking at different siblings, we might see different identifications and need to do plenty of background work there. So I think I just want to share this evening that we're pretty well aware of some of the challenges that are inherent to the system and bringing the students who the program intends to serve together. And then also organizing our resources so that we can serve them well and extend the program into other areas. Chris mentioned the federal funding that's available for American Indian Ed, and we're actually actively in the process. We'll have our first step for application for that funding in the next week or so. And throughout this school year, we'll be completing the steps for that to hopefully expand our funding and our service to elementary schools in the coming year. So, so yes, I mean, it's an incredibly important program and a lot of work to run it well. And so I really think that this is an opportunity for us to really buckle down and think about what that means and what our next steps are.
Excellent. Any further discussion? One of my takeaways from that meeting is I would really like to also see that we're sort of building in a regular rotation to kind of solve like the little stumbling blocks along the way as well, so that we can also serve them so well. Because I think there's also a lot to be celebrated there with our students' academic achievement and success along the way, too. So, all right. All of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? And that motion carries. Thank you. All right. As we are also going to have a closed session tonight, for a couple of updates, we are going to kind of move to the front. Board member reports, where board members will provide a brief report from their committee work or events that they have participated or seen a passion in since last we met. I will start furthest to my right, Mr. Bierman.
Nothing to report, sir.
Okay. Director Wendy Felton?
Yeah, I would just like to be sure and say congratulations to our girls hockey team. We're very proud of you. You made South St. Paul very proud. So I thank you. And a huge thank you also to Coach Palmquist. He's been with us for many, many years. So we thank him, Dave, very much for everything that you've done for our students in this great thing. And also personally, I am a major theater person who loves to go to our theater schedules. So it is possible already to order tickets for our spring theater. It's called The Tempest. It's a Shakespeare play at the high school, which will be held on April 14th to the 16th. So if you're interested in attending that event, you can, you can go online, go on the district website under Activities for Theater, and you can already order your tickets for the spring. So that's really great. And I want to put a personal thank you and congratulations to Sarah Winsonston for being our Athena Award winner, which is an award that is annually presented to a senior class girl in the district. So Sarah, very proud of you. Congratulations, because you've been involved in a lot of our activities. So congratulations for being so great in South St. Paul. Thank you.
Excellent. Director Tim Felton?
Well, I was going to talk about the Sweethearts Dinner a little bit, but I'll let Chair Roche talk about that. I don't want to steal his thunder. But I was there and it was wonderful, that fundraiser for the show choir. And then I don't know if we could see that on camera there, my sweatshirt. But I had a great pleasure of watching the tournament this last weekend and the girls' team did wonderfully, finished in third place. And Superintendent Zambino and me were talking about, it's not always about wins and losses. And I think one of the best things about our program is the quality individuals that Coach Palmquist continues to turn out in that program. He teaches them how to be young ladies and they really are classy individuals, as is Coach Palmquist. And I think he is the longest-tenured girls' high school hockey coach in the country. So we've got a little treasure here in South St. Paul. But yeah, it's not all about wins and losses and South St. Paul has a quality program in all ways.
That's fantastic. And Director Weber?
So I also wanted to congratulate the girls' hockey team. But I also want to do a big shout out to the wonderful individuals who run the district's social media accounts, because I was not in the state last week for the tournament. But through the power of the internet, I was able to follow along with all the different updates to Twitter and to Facebook and to various things and all the like pictures and things. So if you want to follow South St. Paul activities from wherever in the world you are, if you have access to the internet, we do a great job of updating everyone about, you know, scores and activities and pictures. And so while I was away, I was able to feel like I was connected back to, back to the events. So shout out to those individuals who do that reporting. And that's it.
Excellent. Director Lola Birdy?
I have nothing tonight.
And Director Plaflin?
Thank you. The Local Issues Committee met last week virtually. We heard a lot of updates from the city. And Superintendent Zambino was also able to give a very similar presentation of what's going on in the school district to the rest of our community. And I do have a quality in action to share. I was at the Family Connections Day that Principal Breetoy was talking about earlier in a second-grade classroom. And it really was a lot of fun to see the students engaged in their learning, see the kids that I hear names, meet them face to face, hear about things that they're excited about. And then the crowd of parents at the door waiting to get in was really impressive this time. So thank you to all the parents who were volunteering, showing up with your kids to be part of their learning. Thank you very much.
Absolutely. I love that. I think as parents, as often as we can be engaged in the process of our own kids' education is a major, major win for both our students and their friends and the community at large. Congratulations to girls' hockey. And yes, Sweethearts Dinner just happened. The big fundraiser for show choir. I tried desperately to bid for cakes repeatedly and was a loser all night long. Really embarrassing to lose with my superintendent sitting to my left all night. But it was a really incredible fundraiser and great performance by the kids and just a really warm and heartfelt night. That was a lot of fun. So, all right. Moving on, we are going to move into closed session for clerical negotiation update from Joel Miltier. And what I was desperately looking for was I'd lost my script on how to properly close a session. So I'm going to wing this and hope that I don't mess this up in front of the HR Director. But I am looking for a motion to close the session at this time. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? I now close our February 27th, 2023 School Board meeting to discuss contract negotiations.